Good evening. Welcome to the August 19th School Board of Elachua County meeting. If you all would please stand and join me in the pledge. I am delectus to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Attorney Delaney.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome. During the School Board of Elachua County's business meetings, reasonable decorum is required during all portions of the meeting. Conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting is not allowed. Any individuals causing disruption or interference will be asked to stop. Failure to comply may result in removal from the meeting. The School Board encourages speakers to focus on issues and constructive input. The School Board impartially receives all public comments. Comments that are obscene, abusive, or threatening are not allowed. Thank you for supporting a respectful environment where all voices can be heard.
Thank you, Attorney Delaney. Can I add a motion to adopt our agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Vu, second by Ms. Plavak. There are no requests to move anything from any of the agenda. We will now vote to accept our agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And so we have Dr. Rockwell joining us this evening via phone. She's still recovering and we hope you're feeling better, Dr. Rockwell. Okay. Dr. Patton, do you have our highlights video for the first?
Yes. So again, our students are back. We're very excited, but they're not back with their whole performance ready to go. So we thought last time, we took a minute to look back at last year and then initiatives for this year. And tonight, we just thought we would share with our community. Our safety always remains paramount with us. And heaven help it if we ever did have some kind of an issue or a problem. One of the big areas of concern, people have had concerns and happened to them, are what happens at the reunification site, where parents would come and be joined with their kids. So Elachua County Public Schools has partnered with the I Love You Guys organization. So what we have for you tonight is a clip of us learning about this protocol, the I Love You Guys protocol, and then us one day learning, the second day actually going then and practicing. So we actually had an opportunity to practice and learn. And both of those were in conjunction with our local law enforcement agencies. So whether it was the Elachua Sheriff's Office, the City of Gainesville, High Springs, and we can name them all, they all had representatives with us so that we could learn together. So that's the best thing we can do is not do things by ourselves, but have partners. So with that, enjoy learning about our reunification sites.
Elachua County Public School leaders and local law enforcement recently came together for two days of school safety training with a focus on reunifying students and families after a school emergency. The training was led by John Michael Keys, who founded the I Love You Guys Foundation after losing his daughter Emily in a school shooting. The foundation's crisis response and post-crisis reunification programs are used worldwide, including in Elachua County Public Schools.
They're unique programs that bring law enforcement and educators into the same room. They have success with implementing the programs, sharing that common language, and we see that as a catalyst for moving outward. If the outcome is the baseline of that team forming as a result of today's activity, then that's got long-term effects in the big picture of school and community safety.
Kids can't learn if they don't feel safe. Teachers can't teach if they don't feel safe. So we want to ensure everyone that safety is a priority and that we continue to make important improvements and enhancements, more so than improvements, to our current safety needs.
After an incident happens, the first thing we always hear is, "I never thought it would happen here." And the mindset is, "I don't think it will happen here. It's less likely to happen to me." But if we're not prepared, then the impact is that much greater on our kids, on our parents, on our faculty, everybody involved, the whole community. So preparation is key.
Day one included a refresher on safety procedures, including prevention protocols and crisis responses based on various scenarios. It also included training on safely bringing students and their families together after a crisis.
So the reunification piece is the most significant because that's when we are bringing our students back together with their parents after any incident might occur. It could be something as simple as a gas leak in the school that causes us to have to evacuate. We want to make sure that we are as accurate as possible in re-unifying those students back with their parents.
Day two involved live exercises, with participants practicing reunification procedures multiple times and reviewing what they learned after each exercise.
We don't want to be inventing a process on the day we need it. And so we focus on providing materials and activities that allow us to create the confidence to have the ability to conduct some of these activities before we need to.
I think when you're in a time of crisis, you're going to react based on muscle memory, and we want to make sure that we are responding in the most appropriate way and that it's our natural instinct. We're here for children, so we should practice and be ready to be our best when children and families need us most.
Now begins the process of preparing staff, students, families, and the community to be ready if and when the reunification process is implemented due to an emergency on campus.
This process will continue. So today, we have with us principals, assistant principals, district staff, but also our local law enforcement agencies, because it's a collective approach if there were an incident. So very important that we all practice together and not wait again until there's an incident.
This is just the beginning. The more people know that they have options in handling situations like that, the fear level drops, the anxiety level drops, because they know they've already had a plan and practiced a plan. So we hope it never happens here in the Gainesville area, but if it does, we want to be totally prepared to handle it.
I think it's very important that parents know that their schools are doing something safe, are doing something orderly, are doing things that is going to keep their students safe in a case of a crisis.
I want parents to know that we are here to support them and their students and make sure that they are safe while they're on any one of our Elachua County Public Schools campuses.
What was fabulous today is seeing administration here. We saw principals, assistant principals, the superintendent. We had school board members here today, and that's actually kind of unique. And seeing superintendent, seeing school board at this type of training is, I think, a testament to the district's commitment to safety in this space.
I thank the staff for putting that together and John McKinley, I think his name was, for coming down and being with us. It was very informative. For the first day that I was there, I didn't attend the second day, but it was very informative. And he's to be commended for bringing something so positive out of something that was so tragic. The Columbine shooting, right? Columbine, right? So yeah, so I would thank him for that. So we'll move on with our meeting. Tonight is the first meeting that we have under our revised public input policy, policy number 169.1, where we'll be receiving all of our public input for non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, as well as agenda items. And we were requesting or requiring that everyone wishing to speak and address the board sign up prior to the meeting start. You can do it online or in person. So I'm going to yield now to Ms. Johnson to give the instructions to the citizens who have signed up to address the board this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This will begin our first public input session. This will be focused on non-agenda items, and speakers will have a total of two minutes to address any non-agenda items they wish to. Our first three speakers are Peggy Vermont, Jane Spear, and Tina Days. If you would please line up at the podium. And be sure to say your full name when you get up to the podium.
Hi, Dr. Peggy Vermont. I'm a school psychologist, three kids in the county, each at different schools, or one that graduated, two that are still in school. I'm here because I am tired of the fascist Christian-right Republicans trying to take over our schools at the local, the state, and the national level. Individuals such as DeSantis, who is corrupt, the no-experience commissioner, who is corrupt, Newberry's own Timmy Martin, who tends to get his nose into all the politics, and our very own unelected board member, who's been trying to infiltrate our board with their far-right Christian national views, and I'm tired of it, very tired of it. Dr. Rockwell did nothing wrong, and under the Constitution of the United States, she has every right to express her opinions and as a citizen on her private time. The fact that the far-right media and Timmy Martin have manufactured an issue because they are anti-public education and would prefer a non-educated electorate, it's hypocritical. And when anyone says anything negative about racist, fascist politicians, or individuals in this community, or outside the community, or even public figures, they normalize it and they just spew hate themselves, and I think it's hypocritical. I was here at the last board meeting and peacefully, I saw many people peacefully expressing their opinions and without any issues. And the person who was aggressive, obstinate, and he had every right to, I guess, express his hate, but he broke decorum, was unnecessarily aggressive, and if he wasn't a white male, he would have immediately been removed and told to leave by law enforcement. Finally, I just am calling for the resignation of Ms. Plavak to resign, offended by her conservative and anti-choice and right-wing.
Thank you, Dr. Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm Jane Spear. I spoke at the last meeting, and my comments tonight are based on that last meeting because, frankly, when it was over, I was stunned. First, I thought that when we meet in this room, that we are always nonpartisan. I know that school board elections are nonpartisan. Perhaps the person who was not elected did not understand that this is a nonpartisan setting. Second, there were two people who called for Dr. Rockwell's resignation. One man spoke respectfully. The other man sort of shocked us all, I think, certainly shocked me. When he spoke, he was wholly inappropriate, and I want everyone to turn your eyes to the wall behind the school boards and look at the civility pledge. Anybody standing where I'm standing now can see that and read it and know very clearly what is acceptable and what is not. Shortly after the meeting, I quickly learned of the man in question's arrest record. He expressed concern about how school board members affect children. I wonder about how his hypocrisy will affect our children, and I will not mention the contemptible words that he used to try to vilify our duly-elected board chair. She received a bizarre letter, frankly, from the Department of Education and demanded that she be there tomorrow morning. It is my opinion that this, that the Florida Department of Education is not looking after or cares about the children in Elachua County.
My name is Tina Days. I'm here as a parent. I'm here as a parent of a BPK'er at Duval Elementary. When I first got there and met the teacher, it was such a welcome community, to the point where my baby, that Sarah, got her book bag and thought she was going to school. She loved Ms. Reese. I had to tell her, "You got to wait till Monday." She has a love of learning, and I've just kudos to Duval. And then I see on the new app, Ms. Patton, the app is wonderful. I'm able to communicate to her teacher directly. She sends pictures of what they do all during the day. I know exactly what she's learning. And so I saw on the feed that ACPS, Early Education Programs, outperformed others across Florida. Eight percent of the district's voluntary pre-kennedon programs were rated excellent based on the academic performance of students and direct classroom observations. What a wonderful thing. We should be congratulating our BPK program, and I say we got the number one best in the state of Florida. So if anyone thinks they need to close Duval because of money, think another day coming because we are a community already the second week of school. And the second thing I want to do, this has nothing to do with the board, but I do want to say, this $82 for volunteer fee. Some schools, the parents already have a low parental involvement already. I've already signed up to volunteer at my daughter's school because I want to do it now because I got teenagers. Once they get fourth, fifth grade, they think it's uncool for your parents to go on field trips. I signed up for it. $82 for a parent, I'm a single parent of four, is a lot. The job that I have, if I don't work, I don't get paid. I'm already losing money because I'm going on field trips. And on top of that, paying $82. Is there any way that the school boards outside the community could chip in to reduce the rate on some of these schools so that parents can participate?
Thank you, Ms. Days. We will have someone from staff to get back with you on that about the volunteer services thing.
Madam Chair, our next three speakers are Elizabeth Husband, Amy Trask, and Melissa Cook.
If you would wait just one second, please. They're going to...
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Husband, and I frequently attend these meetings. And on the eve of Dr. Rockwell's appearance before the State Board, I wanted to speak once again in support of her. I think in a state where we have an elected official who laughs about the sound of the tires thumping over bodies of protesters, that all the outrage over Dr. Rockwell's comments is just a wee bit hypocritical. As a retired educator myself, I knew every day at work that I was with kids and parents and coworkers and administrators who didn't share my political views. It never once occurred to me that I should question their ability to function in their jobs simply because we disagreed. We put the children first, and I think there's no reason to think that Dr. Rockwell is suddenly not going to be able to do the job that she has so adequately and done up to this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Husband.
Sorry about that, y'all. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak. I want to echo what Elizabeth said as well on the eve of a pretty big hearing tomorrow. I think it's important that we acknowledge that this, unlike what the neighboring mayor has said, this is not war. This was a speech that was protected by the First Amendment. It is protected by previous case law in the state of Florida. She should not be held accountable to standards that have already been acknowledged in former case precedents. I will be driving a group of people tomorrow to be speaking on that at the Department of Education's meeting, and I hope a lot of people here will as well. I wanted to also acknowledge one other thing, and I know that it's already passed, but I want to urge the board to circle back on how we have public participation in these meetings. As you all saw, I came in 10 minutes late. If I hadn't preregistered, I wouldn't be able to speak right now. And when we have parents that work long jobs, when we have educators who are driving from across the county, they may not get here right on the dot. And if we look at our laptop loans from the last few years, we can see that preregistering is not always an option, and it's not always equitable. And to be asking people to show up right on the dot, right at 6 o'clock, or preregister if they don't have those resources, we're eliminating a lot of voices from the conversation. We're eliminating a lot of potential perspectives that we need to make representative change and sustainable change in our county. So I wanted, I know, like I said, I know that we've passed this, but I want to urge the board to please circle back and come up with some potential alternatives to add in addition to these mechanisms that we have to allow every voice at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trask.
Hello, my name is Melissa Cook. At first, I want to thank the parent that spoke, and I think it's wonderful that you're volunteering and doing that and have so many good things to say about it.
Ms. Cook, would you pick the mic up or speak into the mic there so we could hear you? Thank you.
Okay, so what I would like to do is direct my, this letter to Attorney David Delaney. So you came up with the new rules, and I just want to make sure I understand them, okay? Consistent application of the policy is critical. I totally 100% agree with that. Merely offensive language is not enough. Comments, when viewed as a whole, must be obscene, crude, abusive, vulgar, pornographic, or indecency. So what was said to me at the meeting last time was, "What the F are you looking at? Do you consider that crude, abusive, vulgar? Would this person have been asked to leave?" Abusive language is, that is harsh, insulting, or cruel. Now, these are the bullet points from the new procedures. Get out. This is our meeting. He's a white supremacist. Shut the hell up. Mind your effin' business. Put him out. And to Janine Plavak, you caused emotional violence. Ms. Williams was verbally attacked, attacked a member of our school board, and was it okay? All right? Another of your points is, "A true threat containing language meant to frighten or intimidate specific persons into believing they will be harmed by the speaker or someone acting at the speaker's behest." Let's say, let's take it outside. Is that language frightening and intimidated because I heard that last time? And knowingly acting or disrupt or interfere with a function of a school board meeting? What does the school board consider disruptive? Okay? Is it disruptive when an opinion is given?
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Our next three speakers are Dex Lewis, Dottie Fabacy, and Jane McNulty.
Good evening. My name is Dex Lewis. I have two grandchildren currently going through the Elachua County School system, and I have two children that graduated through that system. And I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of Dr. Rockwell. What we are witnessing right now is not accountability. It is an unfair campaign to discredit a leader who has given her heart and her energy to the district. We all know that the charges stemming from the last school board meeting are false. They are distortions, and using them to demand her resignation is unjust and harmful. That should alarm every single one of us who cares about fairness, truth, and stability in our schools. Dr. Rockwell has led with integrity. She has earned the trust of this community through her work, her commitment, and her courage to serve. To demand her resignation under false pretenses is not just wrong, it's dangerous. It sends a message that misinformation and pressure tactics can undo the will of the voters. We cannot allow that to happen. I urge this board and everyone in this community to stand firmly behind Dr. Rockwell. Let's shut down the noise and remember what's at stake: our students, our schools, and the integrity of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dex.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. Can you hear me okay?
Is, I cannot hear you.
Now?
Yeah.
What?
It's not, the mic's not on. I'm not sure. Wait just a second, Dottie.
Six to eight inches.
Incredibly.
Can you hear me now? Yes, you can. Okay. Madam Chair, board members, my name is Dottie Fabacy, resident of Gainesville, Elachua County. I want to, I kind of echo what Ms. Amy Trask has said. I can certainly adhere to the new policy for public comments. That won't be a problem. But I do have a little problem with changing a policy for one person who obviously didn't know how to conduct himself at a board meeting, when those of us that attend on regular meetings for issues that are important to us, we all understand how we're supposed to behave. So anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fabacy.
So if I understand correctly, a board member, as a private citizen, may exercise their First Amendment right to free speech and has the right to express their opinion. They are not representing the school board or Elachua County Public Schools. Therefore, Sarah Rockwell was well within her right as a private citizen to make a private comment. Her track record on the board demonstrates representation has been for all students and from the dais completely nonpartisan. On July 31st, member Plavak claimed Dr. Rockwell committed a breach of community values of nonpartisanship representation. From the dais, cameras rolling in a room full of eyewitnesses, Ms. Plavak gave a speech as to why she was appointed by MAGA Governor DeSantis. Her conservative values, her faith that she values life, and a conservative who respects and loves his country. Each of these statements were clear declarations of partisanship. The hypocrisy and the lack of self-awareness is worrisome, but I suspect she will not be rebuked by the MAGA Board of Education Commissioner. MAGA, the stolen campaign slogan from Reagan, has morphed into the personification of cruelty, grievance, anger, xenophobia, homophobia, misogyny, racism, and white Christian nationalism. It despises education, science, and expertise. It seeks to erase history and rewrite it. It embraces conspiracy theories and dismisses facts. It is pushing our nation towards autocracy. I would be very happy with...
Thank you, Ms. McNulty.
Our final two speakers on non-agenda items are James Carrington and Evelyn Fox. Our final two speakers on non-agenda items are James Carrington and Evelyn Fox.
Good evening. I'm James Carrington, and I'm up here today to thank you for letting me speak, but more importantly, to remind you that this is a public, we may want to start the clock, this is a public body. You have a constituency. I'm not sure who your constituency is, whether, I was a teacher, and I always thought it was the students, and then somebody told me it was the taxpayers, and then somebody told me, no, it's your supervisors, and then somebody told me it was the school board, and then somebody told me it was the union, and then somebody, my point being is, it's wonderful to get a lot of different points of view. It's wonderful that you have an open forum, and I ask that you, as school board members, rise to the occasion, do the right thing, and as a backup, I want to indicate, please pay attention to our budget. I did get my Social Security notice today on, on the raise that I'm getting, and I might be able to get a gallon of milk out of it. So if times are tough, but please manage the money well. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Carrington. And I hope I said that correctly.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Evelyn Fox, and I'm president of the NAACP here in Elachua County. I'm here with the same question and concern that we had the last time I was here, and that is, when are we going to start a national search for a permanent superintendent? The community is wanting to know. At least it could be an agenda item to be discussed, but the way I see it, it's been completely ignored. I think when I was here before, Mr. Vu made the motion, and Dr. McNeely seconded it, and it died for a third vote. When you all were campaigning and through everything, you all promised our community that we will do a national search for a permanent superintendent. I think that now is the time. We don't need to put it off. We don't want any more interim at this time. We would like to have a permanent superintendent to lead this district, and more importantly, our kids to high heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Ms. Surtin, we have one more speaker for non-agenda items. That is Carolina Cordero.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. My name is Carolina Cordero, and I'm here to support Dr. Sarah Rockwell. I, I am an educator myself. In a previous life, I was an adjunct professor at the Inter-American University of Puerto Rico. I taught finance courses for both graduate and undergrad, and I did that for 11 years. And I know the responsibility as an instructor of how I can impact people's lives. Moving forward, we are in 2025. One thing I, that really I appreciated was when students wanted to, to have classes with me, and they wanted to stay. So moving forward, it has been very apparent and obvious that the community want Dr. Rockwell to stay, at least for one more year. Another thing that I learned as a teacher is that to have something stay in your mind, you need repetition. So people have been repeating, and I will repeat again. For Dr. Rockwell, she's, she, she has the, ensures that students receive the highest education possible. She works tirelessly to ensure that the goals of the Public Schools Education Board go, go across, and she also cares about the parents. So it would be, it would be a big loss if we don't allow Dr. Rockwell to continue and finish her part. We will continue to say it. If they get tired of hearing it, we are not getting tired of saying it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolina Cordero. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have two speakers who wish to address agenda items. They are Ted Dobraki and Carmen Ward.
Just actually, just wait just one second. Ms. Johnson will do the minutes, and then we'll come to those, okay? Wait just one second. We have two agenda items. We'll, approval of our minutes first, and then we'll come to the speakers, okay? You're looking like you, do you have something different?
On the agenda, on the agenda that I have, item five for public comment on agenda items comes right after item four.
Okay, that's not what I have, but that's okay. Okay. So if you hold those, I'll, I'll get them just a second, okay? And I'll go back, because I want to go by what I have, since I've, this is what I have, and so I don't throw myself off, okay? So there was probably a revision, and I didn't get that revision. All right. So next, we have up two sets of minutes to approve, approval of the special board meeting minutes for July 20, July 24th, 2025. Can I get a motion? Is it second? Motion by Dr. McNeely, a second by Mr. Vu. Is there any board discussion or anything on those minutes? Any corrections needed? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Rockwell, any opposed? Okay. So those minutes will be adopted. Can I get a motion to approve the regular school board meeting minutes for July 31st, 2025? Okay, motion by Mr. Vu, a second by Dr. McNeely, for the approval of the regular school board minute, meeting minutes for July 31st. There any board discussion on that? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. Motion passes 5-0. And then approval of the public hearing and adoption of the 2025, 2026 tentative millage and budget meeting minutes for July 31st, 2025? Is there a second? Moved by Mr. Vu and second by Ms. Plavich. Is there any board discussion or any corrections to those minutes? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye? Opposers?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. So now, we will have public comment on our agenda items, and.
We have two speakers who wish to address our action item. They are Ted Dobraki and Carmen Ward. They will have two minutes each.
Good evening, Ms. Chair, and before I start my remarks, I just want to mention that I did view the workshop last week, and Mr. Delaney actually gave a very great presentation about what the public comment requirements were, and I would recommend anybody go and look at that. And I'm actually going to use a word that he taught in that, which is grievance. My grievance that I'm talking, going to talk to you about today is, and I'm sure you share it too, is the sometimes unsteady gyrating budgets. And actually, at the, the millage hearing, I mentioned a five-year plan that another school district that I was on the school board actually uses now. For the health insurance, it's really a three-year plan that you really have to consider. One is the plan, the year that's not finished yet. Second one is the plan that, the year that you're working on, and the third year is the second year out. On the actuarial side, at the workshop, you had a great discussion about ways of reducing costs and stuff. But the real problem is, right now, it's not what the fund balance is. It's if you use any of it, you're actually creating a structural deficit. So if the increase for the second year out is going to be the same as what it is now, you're actually going to get hit by a double whammy. And only 15% of the employees actually pay premiums, so it doesn't affect that money. So the question is, how much do you really want to do to help them and also to help the general fund? And I would recommend not creating a structural deficit. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dobraki.
I'm Carmen Ward. Thank you for this time to talk about the insurance issue. So we have a decision to make, and I am urging you, on behalf of the union, to not increase the health insurance rate to the premium. And that is because that will deplete the general fund. That will further deplete the general fund if we invest more money in the premiums that you pay for every employee. Those premiums are paid whether the employees take the health insurance or not. And so I urge you to pass on any rate increase to the current premium, because we have only been building the fund balance. The previous speaker didn't seem to understand what a fund balance is. But we have, after the whole budget, which is pretty giant for the, for the benefits, after the whole budget is paid into premiums and we pay out the claims, what we have left over in reserves has grown year after year, because our benefits are overfunded. We have overbudgeted. We didn't have money for salary, for good salary raises. We had a salary raise, but we didn't have money last year for good salary raises, and the narrative was, the district is broke. But here we are, and you're, if you agree to increase the premiums you pay into our self-insurance, you will deplete our general fund, and then there won't be money for good salary raises again. And I see this year after year. I'm usually saying, spend the money, spend the one mil, but here I'm saying, don't spend the money, 0%.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Thank you. All right. So with that, our public comments for the meeting have been closed. We've received all, public comment from all of our citizens who have signed up to speak, and so we will proceed on with the consideration of the items on our agenda. And we're now at our consent agenda. Dr. Patton, are you?
Thank you. The staff encourage you to accept the consent agenda items. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Vu. I need a, can I get a second, and then we'll discuss. Okay, a second by Ms. Plavich and Dr. McNeely. You have some.
Madam, Madam Chair, thank you. I wanted to raise a question about the item under consent, under mental health.
Consent agenda item number five. I had a lot of questions also.
Oh, okay. All right.
I've already done mine, so go ahead.
All right. Do I address this to the person who's listed or to the superintendent? Help me with that.
So, Dr. Patton, do you want Dr. Edwards to go ahead and fill the questions?
Go ahead and address, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Patton. Dr. Edwards, would you look at the number two item, policy roles and responsibilities? And would you share with me what changes in the paragraph, which starts with AC, Elachua County Public Schools is actively reviewing and refining? Tell me, you have a sentence in there that addresses our family liaisons, which probably is not right.
Yes, ma'am, that was incorrect. That is something that Vice Chair Surtin has also.
I can't hear you.
Yes, ma'am, that was a correction that we have addressed. Vice Chair Surtin brought that up earlier in the course of this week, and we have gone in and made that correction. It was an oversight on the part of the department, but that has changed and been removed.
I do appreciate that answer, because I think I was one of the ones who wanted to have the family liaisons in our district, and it's unfortunate that that has passed, and we don't have them any longer. Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
Do you have any other questions, Dr. McNeely? Was that the only one? That was it? Okay, thank you. So if there's, there are no other questions, Dr. Rockwell, are you there? Do you have? Okay.
I don't have questions.
Okay, thank you. So we're ready to vote now. We've, all in favor of receiving the consent agenda items as presented? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so motion passes 5-0. And now we have our action item, renewal of 2026 insurance rates, and Ms. Terry's already back there.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Terry.
Can you hear me okay? No?
Not really. It's like, you speak so softly. Ms. Plavich, I, I, listen, this, this has been, what do you say, the bane of my existence? I am so appreciative of our colleagues at the County Commission for rewiring this, but the microphones.
So we actually have a gentleman from the company here today watching our board meeting so they can understand where our concerns are to help if it's a training issue, whatever it is, because we asked them to come out after our last meeting just to take a look. I know it's a very expensive system, but something's not quite right.
Yeah, you know, and I'm, it's kind of frustrating, because they have, we have the same equipment that the county and the city has, and they.
They paid for it.
The county paid for it. I'm, I'm forever grateful, because they gave us a good upgrade. What we had before wasn't, you know, it wasn't good, yeah, so.
The gentleman that's here is getting to hear your comments, so he'll understand our concerns.
Yeah, so.
And see him firsthand.
It's been frustrating for everybody, I'm sure the staff as well, the staff, the citizens, you know, folks on Channel 12 and YouTube.
Now let's see if this better. Yes?
That's better, a little bit better.
All right, so the action item in reference tonight is about the Health Benefits Plan. In the past, the district's insurance committee would recommend to the board the cost of the premiums for contracted employees. On July 17th and 22nd, the insurance committee met, but could not come to a consensus on the premiums. Two different suggestions, and both votes were deadlocked. So therefore, the Bailey Group was asked to present the benefits data to the board at the August 13th board workshop. They presented information regarding the prescription program and the medical plan. Some of the details that they gave us, claims equaled 96% of the budget, which are the premiums. The actuaries recommended a premium increase of 14%. However, the Bailey Group removed the opt-out employees. Those are employees who choose not to take part in the benefits program, and there's 508 of them. So when they took that out, then they recommended an increase of 7.35%. They did say, though, that the board could go as low as, consider going as low as 5% and still be okay. However, they did remind the board to be careful about going lower than 5%, because they know of districts that have gone lower for increases for one or two years, and then had to come back. They knew two districts who had to raise at 17%, a district who had to be over 20%, and another one had to have an increase of 31%. They also provided a summary of the cost to the fund. They also provided a summary of the cost to the fund balance using different percentages. So I want to show that to you at this time. So what we're looking at here is the rate increase. This one is in green, 7.35.
Just, Ms. Terry, are you going to project it at the booth? Okay. Okay.
I wasn't, I guess they were.
That's very tiny. Is it, yeah, can they like zoom in on that or we use the camera on the side of the podium there to project it?
Is that better?
No, that's everything.
Yeah, she's saying, we have it, but it's hard to see it, but the citizens, yeah. Yeah, probably, just like when we do these in the future, to make, and I've been meaning to tell you guys, make the font bolder so that it'll show up, it'll project better. But I have it here, we'll just have to depend on, I mean, we'll go through it, okay?
And it was on board docs also for the public to see then also. So just to go over this chart, the 7.35% is in green because that is what the Bailey Group recommended based on taking the opt-out employees out. So we're looking at the 2025 rate funding and then the total funding. Here's the opt-out, which is the same across the board. And then the fund balance, where it would impact our fund balance is in this row. And then I'm going to go over each column. And then, of course, the total 2026 renewal funding is the same across the board. So when you look at 7.35%, there would be no impact to the fund balance. If we look at an increase of 5%, the fund balance impact would be 7, I'm sorry, 752,460. 3.7% increase, it's $1,168,646. Then if we look at the 1.5, it's 1.8 plus $1 million. And then a 0% increase would be a 2.353 million dollar fund balance draw. So this is where the Bailey Group was saying at 7.35, and that's based on, like I said, what the actuaries had said, but then they took out the opt-out employees, the 508. So we are recommending, or the superintendent is recommending, a 5% increase. I also wanted to remind the board that per contract language in the instructional CBA for teachers, Article 18 under compensation, section one, it does say that the board will continue to pay the employee portion of the premium for eligible teachers. It's the same language in the ESP contract. PTs and administrators follow that same language. So what that is talking about is that the board pays for the individual employee. If the individual employee decides to add in a spouse and/or family, then they would pay those parts of the benefit. So the language continues to say, any future increase in the cost of the insurance will be paid by the board from the funds. Now, that means not the spouse and/or the family, but it means the individual employee. And that's what we would be doing wherever you all decide what increase would be, then the board would pay that increase for the individual employees. Any questions at this time?
I have one, but I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have one. But I wanted to get you to go to step back through that. I think I got it, what you just said.
Okay.
From Article 18, section, I didn't write that down.
Section one.
Section one, okay. But I want you to, I heard you say, I understood you to say that the board will pay, per contract language, the employee portion of the health insurance. If the employee has what we call family or dependent care coverage.
Yes.
That is paid by the employee and not the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Any increases or whatever is paid by the.
Whatever increase, they would pay that increase if there is an increase to that.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's my question. I see, Mr. Vu, you have your light on, and so you're recognized.
I'm going to circle back to talking about, you know, the deadlock committee. I know the union was presenting a 0% increase and that got deadlocked. What was the district's, or at least the other side's counter motion in terms of like the rate increase?
At that point in time, it was 3.7% increase. And however, I'm going to say we did not have this particular, what's up on the board right now, we didn't have that particular form, if you will call it that. So we did not really see the impact that it was going to have on the fund balance.
But we had like the top line numbers in terms of last year's funding rates and then what the actuaries are recommending, and then the 7.3, 5% figure from the consulting firm, correct? So that was all available. So you could have mathed it in the meeting anyway, just quickly to figure that out if you didn't have it like formally on a chart.
I'm not sure. They did say that the 7.35 would have a zero impact on the fund balance, but we didn't really have this type of information at our insurance fund meeting. They really had brought in what the actuaries said and their 7.35%. We didn't have these others. I asked for this, once we were at that deadlock and we knew we were going to be coming to the workshop, I asked if they would put this, create this document for you to be able to see that, for the board to be able to see it.
And then, I have a question about, like, in your experience, have there ever been, not necessarily like a school district or really any employer that has increased the rates for maybe just the individual plan, but froze them for things like families, children, things like that to where like, hey, you know, that there is maybe like a disparate, I guess, split of like the rate increases, for example?
I'm going to say I have not worked for a district who has done that. I'm not going to say that there aren't districts to do that. I don't have that information.
Yeah, because this is my biggest thing on this whole thing is that, you know, let's say we take the recommendation, it's still going to be funded by us in terms of into the, you know, our health insurance fund, but what it really does change and what I have an issue with is the premiums that families pay because health insurance, if you have to want to cover just one kid, is drastic, like how the increase in costs and the cost of insuring one kid and seven kids in our district is the same, the same when you add a spouse. And so I would be in favor of an increase of the individual rates, but then freezing all the rates for any employee who also then chooses to cover their spouse, children, and family.
Ooh, I don't know if I can support that, Mr. Vu. I can't. I'm not sure if I can support that. I don't because the cost, I understand the impact that it has on families, but when we cover dependence on the plan, it actually puts a lot of burden on, financial burden on this plan because we're self-insured. So you have a lot of claims, so we really have to be recovering and funding the claims fund by everyone who is covered. And so it's the district, so what you're asking the district to do is, let's just use like round numbers, right? We're here, we should have did this in the workshop. All right, but anyway, so.
I asked a question on it, and they were like, the families and spouses' social coverage has the least impact actually on like.
Well, we don't have the numbers, like, I don't have the numbers, but the thing is, you got numbered people, but then you have claims. So like, just for instance, when I was on my husband's plan with the county, they're also self-insured, so I didn't have coverage through my employer. So when I had the children, you know, the childbirth and all of that, that was hitting their plan. So, and the county actually was, you know, they subsidized some of that. So we're asking now the district, meaning to cover 100% of the increase as well as the plans, you know, the way we pay those claims are by money that go into that claim fund. So if we're saying, and claims are increasing, we saw that from the data that they showed us and that the Bailey Group gave us. So we're saying, we're going to, the district is going to pay for the premium increase, not give that to the, for the employees. And then we're also going to have to cover the increased claims amount. That's the reason why the insurance fund's fund balance is growing is because we have to have more money set aside to cover the higher claims, and claims are more expensive, medical costs, what we saw the other day, and medical claims, actual cost of insurance. So, I mean, I can embrace the 5% because of the, you know, considering the portion, the money that we save from the 508 people, you know, the employees that don't carry the insurance, but you're going to either pay the piper now or you're going to pay them in the future, so. Does anybody else have any, you have anything else, Mr. Vu?
I do, if no one else does.
Go ahead, Dr. Rockwell.
So first, I have a question for Mr. Vu. I'm not sure I understood what he said correctly. Mr. Vu, were you suggesting that we have different dependent rates based on the number of children a person has?
I know we can't decide at this meeting. I would love to do that in the future at some point, work through that, but just presenting as is now, no. I'm just saying that for any employee that chooses to cover a spouse, children, or family, that those rates not be raised this year, but for any employee only that the district actually would be covering, we go ahead and raise those rates to the recommended 7.35%.
Okay, I don't agree with that. I do agree with in the future, looking into, you know, is it possible to have different rates based on the number of dependents? Because we do have employees with just one child who are paying the same amount as someone with five or six children, even though their claims values would most likely be dramatically different based on the number of dependents. So that is something to look at in the future. I wanted to just add the comment that, you know, first of all, when we look at the fund balance right now, it is somewhat misleading because the fiscal year for our insurance policy is, matches a calendar year, unlike our district fiscal year that goes from July 1st to June 30th. So it looks like we have a very large fund balance right now, but some of that, a lot of that will be eaten up with the claims that occur from now to December. And because people start hitting their deductibles and/or max out-of-pocket, we will be getting in less and paying out more proportionally in the latter half of the year. So that is one thing to consider as we look at this. Another thing to consider is what is coming in terms of Medicaid cuts. When Medicaid is cut, people with acute conditions are still going to go to the hospital, and the hospital is still going to serve them, but they're not going to get as much reimbursement from the federal government for that. That drives up healthcare costs for insured individuals. So in the near future, we are going to be looking at rising costs to our self-insurance program because of reduced numbers of people who have coverage. And so that is something to consider when we look at our insurance fund balance and our rate increases. I could support the 5%, I could support the 3.75%, but I cannot support zero increase when we know that costs are going to be rising and that our healthy fund balance won't remain healthy if we don't take care of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rockwell. Anyone else?
My light is on.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, Dr. McNeely, let me move this thing.
That's okay. That's all right.
Because this little package here is not.
Sure.
Go ahead, Dr. McNeely.
Ms. Terry, I raised the question before about our retirees. I'm very concerned about what they face. So help me understand, if we had different rates for the retirees, how would that look and could that eventually happen? They are very much put in a predicament, in a pickle, retired, and their rates are continuing to increase as well. What can be done? If you can speak to that here or we have to have another workshop, I don't know.
I think that would be the same, where we would have to get information from the Bailey Group as to how that would impact this, the same as we would have to find out about dependents and having a different cost per dependent. But right now, we have 162 retirees on our plan. Now, remember that retirees pay for their premium. The district does not.
Right.
Pay their premium.
I know that.
We do have 162 on our plan. So I'm thinking that is something we could look at for the future and be able then to say, is there something we can do differently for our retirees? And sometimes I think for our retirees, we almost maybe need to do education for them to say, why are they still paying our prices here when they may have Medicare and a supplemental that they're getting? Because this is not their primary insurance. So Medicare would be their primary insurance, and then this would be their secondary.
It might be a possibility of the retiree not having the age at the time. I was that, and my premium that I paid before being elected to this board was outrageous, $360 per month as a retiree.
It probably is that much because they're paying the same exact premium that the board is paying per employee.
Okay, I hope that in the future, we can certainly consider taking a look at that. I could certainly go along with colleague Rockwell for 3.7, but definitely no lower than that.
I think hers was five.
She said.
She said both.
She said two, but.
She said 5% and 3%. She could, 3.7%, she could go along with either one or the other.
Okay, Ms. Playback.
Ms. Terry, what was the increase last year?
What was the what?
What was the rate increase last year for the premiums?
It was a 3 point, it was 3.7%.
Okay, so is it, so there was no negotiation initially with the insurance to go that low to try to keep it at that because you were going off with the Bailey Group was saying?
We did bring 3.7% up at the insurance committee, but the vote was a deadlock.
Okay, so half and half.
Yeah, there was a 0% increase and that was a deadlock, and then we brought back 3.7% and it was a deadlock.
Okay. The percentage, do you have a way of knowing the percentage when we were looking at the figures at the workshop related to what Dr. McNeely said, of how much those retirees are impacting the medical component of this? Like, are they a significant amount or is it still mostly our employees?
Well, what Bailey Group had said to us, that even for a small number, they have a larger percentage of claims. And I don't have the exact number for retirees in the claims. Let me take a look here, I'm not sure if. No, I don't have that broken out, but they did tell us that for the percentage of retirees, the claims are at a very high percent, higher than normal.
And I also agree with Dr. McNeely in the respect that if you go into teaching at 25 and you want to retire with your 30 years or 30, you are. and you want to retire with your 30 years or 30, you are not Medicare age and they're raising the Medicare age as we go along. So there has to be some kind of gap for them to be able to be, that's a benefit for us. Um, I believe that they said that our fund balance is $16 million currently, somewhere around there. And I agree with Dr., Ms. Surtin that, and Dr. Rockwell, that we haven't paid out, it's only August, September, we're, we have four more months. But I think even at the worst, and I, I'm not gonna, I want to knock on wood, that we have no catastrophic events. But I could see us maybe four, $5 million, maybe more, um, conservatively paying out. So that would leave us 11 million, maybe, in the balance or maybe more. But, um, I also acknowledge that our employees haven't had the raises to keep up with this. I certainly do not support the 7.35 or the 5% for sure. Um, and then you go, if it's 3.7, it's 1.1 coming down on the fund draw. And then you go to 1.5, it's 1.8 coming down on the fund draw, according to this, correct?
Yes.
Frankly, I would like 1.5% and like, and make it an even from their raises. Um, I understand Ms. Surtin's concern. Um, but I think the employees have to see that we support them and that I would like for them to understand that they might have to have, I mean, they have to, we don't know what's going to happen with our economy and what's going to happen. But if we did the 1.5%, I hate to have it come up to seven or eight the next year. So I'm really at a, I'm really at a, it's hard, it's very hard. I've been in their shoes, I, I absolutely understand that. Um, but I think I'm going to stick with 1.5%. So that's going to be my, my feel for this one.
And the Bailey Group just did remind us that, you know, if we go lower, that more than likely, like you just said, you're going to maybe even be up over 7% the next year. Because those districts where they saw that went lower, then they wound up going 12%. The one went all the way up to 31%. So that, that's when the Bailey Group even talked to us in the insurance committee. They said, we have to be very, very careful in going too low because then the next year, it could be that you have to go even higher.
And I don't think we had this 1.5% in our PowerPoint from then, do we? I thought it was like 3.7 to nothing. Was, did we have 1.5?
We did not.
We did not have this 1.5% option when they presented it to us. So this is a new option that we're assisting tonight, correct? Ms. Surtin?
This is, this is, was, was posted on Board Docs, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't, I actually didn't even see it. I, like, when you put something else up, once I get my binder, I probably, I guess I should need to be looking, but I didn't, I don't look. Once I pick the binder up, I'm looking at that and I bought what I had there. So I guess for me, what I think we need to realize, right now at August, August, we have, well, I have an estimate of what the, what the fund balance, um, is about 16 million, right?
Yes, it is.
August, right? So we've been told that, um, 94%, 96%
96.
96% of the premiums are paid in are, uh, are going out to pay claims. So that only leaves about 4% of what we're paying in that goes into the fund balance. So it may end up at 16 million at the end of the year, right? But we've been told we need to have about, um, six months worth of claims. So I'm just sitting here in my mind, we got $16 million that we really, I mean, if the claims here, I mean, the, the rates for 2025 are 32 million and we divide that by 12, right? And they told us we should have about that, six months of that, five to six months, 32 million is going for.
That would be like half of
Half of it.
Thirty-two million.
I'm just doing math, you know? It's about 16 million, right? But if you take the 60, if we, if we figure we're going to end up 16 million after all the dust settles out for the calendar year. And you look at this 1.5 increase, this line here that has the fund balance drawdown, that's the amount that's going to be coming out of the, the insurance fund balance, okay? So if you got 16 million and you're taking 2 million out, you're going to be at 14 million. We've already heard that and we've seen data that's showing us that claims for the year are trending up. So if you got your claims trending up and your savings account, you're decreasing, that's going to leave you with a gap, an unfunded gap, an unfunded
Not unfunded, it comes out of your general fund.
Well, it would have to come out of, but I'm saying in the insurance fund. We're just going to talk about insurance right now. We, I mean, so if you don't have it in the insurance fund, that means we got to make a transfer from general fund, which we are like scraping the bottom of the barrel to put in the insurance fund. And so that is, that's the, the, the structural deficit that the citizen referred to earlier. We don't want to get into that. So, um, Dr. Patton?
I just want to make a couple of quick comments. One is that 96%, we're, we're using that number 16 million. Our estimate is that 32 million. So that 16 million fund balance at the end of June means that we're going to spend 16 more million. So it's almost back to a zero at the end of the year. That's why your 96%, we will use it. There's not going to be sitting there with 16 million at the end of the year. That number that you saw, Debbie's number, is only through the end of June. We can keep saying August, but that number is at June's fund balance. Second thing to remember, in '25 last year, it was 3.7. In '24, we paid 4.22 and '23, we're at 5.17. So when we just toss out last year, what was your number? You saw this at the workshop. It was 3.7 last year, the year before, 4.2, the year before in '23, 5.7. Why was it 5.7? Because we had in '22 gone down to 2%. So it's 2%, 5.7, 4.3. So it, it is true, it will make those jumps. Just making sure you know numbers, that's all, it's your decision. But I want to be sure you know numbers that you saw at the workshop.
All right, so we have, um, a recommendation from the, from the superintendent is a 5% increase. And, um, and I've heard from different amounts from, um, my colleagues here. So I need a motion that we can, we should have had a motion before we started this discussion here. But got a motion now. We, we discussed while Ms. Terry was doing the presentation, while she queued it up for us. So if I could get a motion and we can kind of move from there.
Um, I move to increase the rate by 3.7%.
Okay. Okay, so Dr. Rockwell, um, motion, moved to increase the rate 3.7% and that was second by Dr. McNeeley. All right, so we got any discussion from the board? Mr. Vu?
I, I do want to like just point out again the disparate impacts. Um, that's going back to what member Playback said. The employees, our teachers got a 1.3% raise, our staff got a 1.6% raise. Um, so even then, like, any increase beyond, um, those numbers, if you're covering again a spouse, your family, or your children, it disparately impacts them because the district covers the employee costs. Um, even just looking at this now, you cover one, like, again, one kid, right? Versus not covering one of your, your children. Your, your rates are increasing almost like, what, 90%? Um, and so then, a huge impact if you are covering your families. And so, again, I would love to see, um, I mean, I don't think there's a will for it right now, but, you know, disparate rate increase depending on whether you're just covering yourself or whether you're covering, um, your family and your children as well. Um, and I really do think that's something we should consider moving forward because this is really who, these rates increases are going to be impacting. Um, and, you know, when I just think about the state of everything and how more expensive everything costs, this is just another thing on that list for all of these families here right now. And it's already very expensive to have a kid. So, um, again, I, I would love to see a family or spousal coverage just not seeing an increase in rates because employees do pay those out of pocket.
And also, I think what I'm hearing, just to throw out some suggestions. One, bring back that different, for next year, to bring back those different categories. To see, um, as you talked about, Mr. Vu, the different, and then also as you talked about, Dr. McNeeley, just looking at retirees. So we could actually look at all of them, but we'll make sure that insurance committee meets a little bit earlier so that we have enough time for you all to, to look at these, with those potential other breakouts.
Those are all fine and good. I agree with you, Dr. Patton, on doing that. Um, you know, our, the, school districts are just really like a little bit constrained. And I think folks are, I mean, you know the constraints we have. Right? You know the constraints, right? So, so I'm, I'm, I'm just proposing a question to you rhetorically because with the way the funding is, the, the legislature is not considering that, so to speak, in the health, health insurance thing and, and us being, and so, and, and for years, school districts have asked to be included in the insurance pool, that the colleges are in the state college pool, that would really bring the cost down for everybody. It would, I mean, for Santa Fe, but they won't let us in that pool or the UF pool. Carmen, you, you probably know that as well.
They'll make it a legislative priority to ask. You haven't decided on your priorities this year?
Yeah, I have not, I was going to bring that up.
FSBA to, FSBA to help us because it's not just our problem, it's 66 other counties' problems.
And, and the dilemma, what we're wrestling with is what, um, other, our colleagues around the state that are, they have, they have to do the same thing. Some of them aren't self-insured, the ones that are self-insured have to wrestle with the same thing, right? You know, but, so I don't know, did you have something you want to add or you are ready to? All right, so I'm
I just do want to follow, follow up on that though. But again, I, I say this because we were told that in terms of like claims and everything, that really like family coverage has the least impact on that. And so in terms of like our actual costs versus what rates are paying in, I really don't think like all these increase in medical costs are really coming from our, our families, our, our employees that cover their families. But again, you know, all the information we were asked for was never really given to us. So I can't say that definitively, I can only go off what they said.
Um, um, Dr. Rockwell? Okay, thank you. Um, go ahead, Dr. Rockwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, one concern I have, and I know this will be coming up in the future, not for tonight, but one concern I have with having a different, or with perhaps not passing the rate increase for dependents on to the person with the dependents is that, um, benefits are part of the total compensation package. So for instance, I have dependents on my insurance. Um, Dr. McNeeley does not. If we have a rate increase and the district pays for my dependents, I have effectively received a higher total compensation than Dr. McNeeley. And, you know, I'm just using us as examples. But that, that basically is giving me a benefit of, a raise effectively she's not getting. And so I do, as, as much as, you know, again, I do have dependents, so I know how much of my paycheck will be taken up by this rate increase. And I, I certainly feel for our employees who will be paying for dependents. And I do support looking at different levels for different numbers of dependents, um, so that someone with one child isn't paying the same amount as someone with multiple children. But in terms of the district paying for my dependents, it just seems like increasing my total compensation, but not everyone else's. It, it just doesn't seem fair from that perspective to me. But, and, and I wonder if that would be something that would need to go to bargaining and not just, um, the insurance committee and the board. I, I would leave that to the lawyers to determine, but those are some of my concerns with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, so.
That's my question too, because it's ultimately about compensation. So just, we'll figure that out and talk about it.
Yeah, um, okay, so we, we have a motion on the floor, um, for 3.75%. I'm, and when we do this, this, we're doing, we, well, we'll vote, we'll. So all in favor of the motion on the floor of increasing the rate 3.7%? Vote aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, um, I'll do a roll call because I didn't get that. So Dr. Rockwell, you voted aye?
Aye.
And Dr. McNeeley? Aye. Mr. Vu?
Nay.
Okay. So that, and I vote nay. So, um, that motion fails three to two for 3.7, Ms., Ms. Okay, so can I get a second?
Yeah, I, I move to increase the rates 1.5%.
Oh, I didn't expect the lower rate, I was expecting the 5%. Okay, so we got a motion for 1.5 and, and it was second by, Mr., uh, motion by Mr. Vu for 1.5% rate increase and second by Ms. Playback. Um, I'm going to do a roll call vote, Dr. Rockwell?
Aye.
Mr. Vu?
Aye.
Ms. Playback?
Aye.
Dr. McNeeley?
Let me say this, Madam Chair, before I get, render my vote. Um, inasmuch that the fund balance drawdown is increasing that much and we are all agreeing, well, so far, you need one more vote to pass it. But I'm, I'm real concerned about that, especially that we couldn't do, agree to a 3.7. But now we're going further down and I don't know. Uh, Attorney Delaney, is there a possibility of me not rendering a vote?
You have to vote, Dr. McNeeley.
Then go for it.
So yes, and so Tina will vote no. So the motion will pass four to one for a increase of 1.5%. And I voted no because, um, I, I don't want to be part of anything when this thing, if this thing goes belly up, I don't want to, um, be, yeah, when it, when it, when it has to be higher. I don't, I'm not going, I can't support things when we're not funding, um, that, it's, insurance is a beast everywhere. I mean, my husband's insurance, I was going to tell you, Dr. McNeeley, actually, all, all the employees with retirees, when you retire, um, no matter where, well, I want to say no matter where, but like for the city, for the county, and it sounds like for the school board now, retirees pay 100% of their, um, insurance themselves unless, and like, so like for the city and the county, you get like a subsidy. So, um, like a dollar amount per year that you work to help bring it down. But all of those employees pay their, 100% of their premium until they get to, you know, Medicare age and you come off the plan. So if, that's why it's so much like a lot of the state of Florida employees, their insurance is 600, 7, 750, depending on which plan they choose. And the county's plan is like Lawrence is paying almost 700 a month just for him because he has to pay it all. The county doesn't put, put any money towards it because he's retired. So what the district is doing now, that's not, it's not an anomaly. It's, that's really what is happening with the city of Gainesville, Antelope County, and like folks that work for like Department of Corrections and stuff like that with the state.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, okay. All right, thank you, colleagues. We're going to move on with our agenda. All right, so now we have our announcements, we're to ACEA updates.
I'm on, yes. I'm Carmen Ward, President of ACEA. Thank you, um, to the board for not raising the rate so much. And thank you for this time to give some updates from our union. So, um, we are currently working on some memorandums of understanding with the district, which is negotiating before we get to bargaining this year. And, um, we are working on some bonuses for school improvement schools. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that. And also, um, Labor Day is coming up. Labor Day has a Labor Day breakfast and all of the board members are invited. We, um, have this every year and we are advertising it, um, in, I was going to say where it is. It's going to be on Saturday of Labor Day weekend, August 30th, from 8:30 to 11:00. August thirtieth, from eight thirty to eleven, and it's at the same place it was last year, which is two thousand three, three, two, northeast seventeenth terrace. So, um, I just wanted to welcome you to that, as well as all of our union members are welcome to attend. We are going to have a Labor Day member-only drawing. We are also gonna be participating in the delegate assembly of the Florida Education Association, um, which is in October and does the business of the state union, and we are taking a delegation of union members to Orlando to participate in that, and so that's very exciting. Um, I want to say thank you to all of the employees that have made the beginning of the school what it has been for students, which is an amazing experience. I do hear that we do have some overcrowding. We always do. At the beginning of the year, we try to figure out what we have, um, in our ten-day count, in our attendance, and there, there are situations where there are absolutely too many children in classrooms. And so, I do hear from our employees that that is the biggest concern this year. That, and air conditioning working is always an issue at the beginning of the year, but, um, this year, there is particularly more and more being asked of teachers and of ESPs, because we had a lot of support positions reduced and cut, and all of that work is still present, ever-present. I have had, um, teachers contacting me about the exploding amount of technology that they are required to do to, in order to test students on devices. And I think, you know, we have to really resource our schools if we are on mission to, and I think we all should be on the mission of being committed to the success of every student. And so I just wanted to, um, say resourcing every school is really important. So, I think that's all I have as updates from the union. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Okay. Alright, so, um, board member and superintendent announcements? Do you have any? We'll do the announcements first, okay?
So just real quick, um, wanted to say, uh, just a big thank you to all of our teachers that greeted our kids here. Um, did a super, super job. The parents that came out and meet your teacher day were just terrific. Um, also to our, um, parents, thank you for being so responsive to your kids and having them all look sharp on that first day too. To our administrators that worked hard this summer to get everything lined up for them. And also to our community members. So many give backpacks to our kids, provided breakfasts for teachers when they were back, and just so many, many partnerships. And then, um, so our favorite word on the first day of school is smooth, so we love to hear that from school after school. And then I know someone mentioned it, so thank you, Tina, for mentioning this earlier. But, um, pre-k, you can't have tonight go by without commenting about our pre-k. So seventy-eight percent of our programs scored excellent. That's the top category. The state, thirty-three percent. That's more than double what is the state's average in pre-k. And, you know, as we worry about, you know, making sure we hang onto every student and choose us, that there's a lot out there that when pre-k's are somewhere else, they can stay, so it's great for us to show people that numbers tell a story with our pre-k's, to come join us, because we'll keep your kids, and then we have that lesser problem as we score that high-end pre-k, that we're not trying to play catch-up from the beginning. So, anyway, just very proud of our whole pre-k staff, everything they've done. The parents, they're a big part of our pre-k too, though, getting them in, getting them on time. So just thank you, a special shout-out to our pre-k staff.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Anyone else with announcements? It's good that we have the, um, the, uh, first day, first week of school, it's always bumpy, but smooth. Smooth bumps. And thank everyone for their patience and us getting that, and the staff for making it go. That's how we get going from, you know, our school leaders and teachers and, and the support staff, as well as the parents, you know, choosing public schools. I always tell people, you know, I ran because I saw issues in schools, um, that I thought wanted to be a part of improving, but I stand by public schools, because nobody does it better than public schools, and public schools take everyone. And I will, will always advocate, because we don't get to pick and choose who we have or who we receive. We have to take every single student. And I, I wish that the priority of, um, those who decide on, you know, the resources that come to us, you know, saw it that way, but they don't. So we have to, um, those of us that are in this space have to start looking at how, how we respond to the, um, how we respond to the dwindling resources, but the ever-increasing demands or, or needs. So the, the, the funding isn't, um, keeping pace with, with the need in a lot of different areas. But I want to thank everyone for choosing on public schools, those who choose to work and support public schools, as well as the parents that choose to enroll their, their students with us, so. Alright, so we'll have board member and superintendent requests. Um, Ms. Playback?
Just quickly, um, this is kind of for Mr. Shellnut. Um, so when I brought up last, um, time about the percentage of level ones in our high schools, you were great to give me the percentage of the ninth graders incoming. So kind of to follow up that, maybe we can start looking at one other thing I'd like to look at. So, um, we only have three SI schools. I think that's great. Um, I applaud the teachers that brought Rawlings up to a C and Alatwa up to a C, but Foster and Williams and Shell are D's. So, in those three schools, I wondered if you could tell me the percentage of classrooms um, that are at risk, in those risk schools that have certified teachers in that schools, those schools, and that how many are first-year teachers? The percentage of first-year teachers in those, um, at-risk schools. That would be helpful for me. I'd love that. Um, I would do want to commend Mr. Shepherd and every, all the staff, Ms. Dell, Ms. Bezner, Suzanne Nguyen, Ms. Neal, Ms. Johnson, everybody over there. And where's Dr. Edwards? Did she leave over there? But, um, I think you guys did a fabulous job starting off in school, and I know that Dr. Patton can't do it, and Dr. Atria and staff. Oh my God, where's Jenny and Kim Neal over there? So, we can't do it without you, and thank you so much for all your hard work, and I see it all the time. So, thanks a lot, and I really appreciate it. And the one other thing I'd like to direct to the board, I know I kind of put this out there. Um, we have two board meetings scheduled, one on the third of September, and one on the first of October. Tentatively, I don't know if that's confirmed, but the one on September third, I was wondering if we could have that at one o'clock in the afternoon, if that's possible. Um, and then, of course, we could talk about the first of October. Mr. Delaney, I don't know if that is okay to change the time of the boards, since it was already set in November, but it would be helpful for me because of my, uh, teaching, but I'm just asking the board if we can maybe change at least the September third one to one o'clock in the afternoon.
So I, um, I was gonna actually have loop back around to the workshop meeting, because, um, I want us to keep that in the morning, and I was going to ask us to bring that back up, because we, we, in November, when we decided upon that, and that's how my schedule was built, and that, you were added to us, and I just think, not that I don't want to consider you, but I just think that upsetting that, that whole dynamic of us moving that, and I think having it in the morning also helps staff, because they would have been out late the previous night, and if we have presentations and things of that nature, but we'll go back to, um, the, um, September, you said second as well?
September third, I think Ms. Green sent out that we have a workshop scheduled.
Right.
I don't know what the agenda is, but.
Yeah.
Mr. Delaney, have we ever changed that in the history of the board, if there was a request?
Uh, yes ma'am, there is precedent for, um, the board adjusting the time of workshops, and that really just comes down to a discussion amongst the board members and, and their decision.
Okay, thank you.
So, um.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. McNeely?
Is it okay?
Yes, yes, Dr. McNeely.
Alright. Is there a possibility, since, as you stated, Madam Chair, that, um, when colleague Playback came on, many of our schedules were already set? Is there a ra, a way that we could possibly compromise and say, on this occasion, either the third or the October one? I don't know. Could, could we, um, at least compromise and do one in the morning and one in the afternoon? Um, I keep reminding all of you, I am not a morning person either. But because this has already been set in stone, we may have to go forward, and then in November, if that's when we change everything around, maybe we'll have to do it then, but I would certainly consider a compromise, one and one, one morning, one afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Vu?
Yeah, just on that, um, I, I, I could be, I could be for that, and if we were to do a compromise, I'd prefer, um, September third, one P M., but then October, um, first, stay ten A M.
Yeah, I, I definitely need the October one to be at ten, because I have to travel for F S B A, I have a trip, and I have to go on the Panhandle, so I definitely need that to be, um, I'm probably gonna have to leave the day before, but, um.
I appreciate your consideration. Uh, if that could work, I'll just take a personal day for the third, so that's fine. I mean, for the first of October. Oh, October eighth?
No, I'm saying October eighth is the one, that's when I travel on the eighth.
It says the first on the calendar.
It says the first on the calendar, though? Oh, okay.
Yeah, but the eighth, I definitely, that's, that's when I, I have to travel, so I don't.
Well, I appreciate it.
Um. And Dr. Patton, what does that do with you guys for staff for, on Wednesday, the September third?
Sorry, one more time? September third, is that, she was asking about staff? Yes, yes, sorry.
Which is better, which works for you all, or morning or afternoon?
So we're gonna go one o'clock on, uh,
The third, yeah, September third.
So, if we could do ten, that would be great.
No, September's, I'm asking you which is better for you, which is better for you all, and that's, the morning works best for me, but we're be, we're asked in, um, being asked to, to do it at one, because I definitely, and Mr. Vu definitely needs it, to stay at, at the ten in October, um, October eighth. And Dr. Rockwell is off, so I can't ask her, but hopefully she'll, those times will be, will work for her, so. Uh, Ms. Green, would you, would you like email Dr. Rockwell and just let her know so she can, she'll know that, and, in case I forget to? Alright. Okay. Yeah.
I'm sorry, one more time, sorry, sorry, sorry. So on the eighth?
It's October.
Yeah, October eighth. That one's at what time?
Ten.
Good, because I have to need that ten. Alright, I'm just making sure I don't bring up another problem.
It really, it, like, for me, I'm not trying to be difficult with you, but when we set, when we do the, the reorg meetings, when I, when I joined the board, the first time, I, I put, like, I had to buy my paper calendar, because that electronic one didn't work for me. And, um, I just put them all, I did, I'm doing, just being honest. And I just scheduled everything around that, so I might, my, I, when we did the reorg in November, that's how my calendar's built for the year. You know, my family knows it, everybody, so I try to keep that down, but so.
As long as we're talking about October, can I just throw something out then, if we're doing the eighth? There's no way to consider possibly moving it to that next Wednesday at all, the fifteenth? Doesn't matter, eight, ten, one?
For the workshop?
Yeah.
October what?
The fifteenth? Just a week later?
I will not be here.
Well, it sounds like you might be doing something fun.
I will be visiting my nephew.
Oh.
That'll be fun.
Okay.
You okay with missing a workshop? We don't vote, it's just, you just watch it afterwards, or what?
The, the October one, though, would be the reorganization one, where we're discussing how to reorganize in November. So I, I would love to be there for that. I, I could do it remotely, um, if I, I needed to.
Is it same time zone?
No, no, I, I, no, they're in three hours.
The west?
West, yeah. It's fine, I, I can wake up at seven A M.
Well, if the fifteenth, uh,
Yeah, no.
But Dr. Patton is, yeah.
Any chance you're here the thirteenth, Mr. Thomas?
Sorry, I am.
Did we do, could you do the fourteenth, that, oh, are you here the fourteenth, Mr. Vu?
No, I fly out.
So the whole week? Okay, the whole week.
I'm here the thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
I fly out Tuesday, yeah.
Um, do you think we could do that?
Yeah, I could do Tuesday.
That work for everybody, the thirteenth?
It depends on what time. I have something on Mondays.
I'm good, whatever time.
I can do whatever time on Monday.
I'll do whatever time.
Yeah.
One?
It's Columbus State that doesn't interfere with anything, right?
I don't think we get that off.
We'll be done. Probably even later. I have, I, I'm sorry, I have things on Monday.
See, that, that's. That's, that's how it went, that's.
Could we, I mean, if it's just the reorganization, oh, I still have an announce, I still have a quest.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We're gonna start discussing this, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the superintendent said it for one, I think she said.
Or you could, if you need to do it later, I could help her, that's fine. What time is your, what time would you be free? Because I, I agree with Mr. Thomas, I'm not sure it's gonna be a real long one.
No, so the thirteenth is the C-TAC meeting day, and so I gotta, I can't, um, I, if we do it, I gotta be done.
More than two hours to do the reorg?
I, I'm okay with appearing remotely. The fifteenth is fine with me. I, totally okay with appearing remotely.
Okay.
But the fifteenth, it's, it's okay.
You wanna do the fifteenth then?
Yeah, I, I can appear remotely the fifteenth, it's okay. It's not a deal.
Wednesday.
I thought he said he couldn't do it.
Yep, he can do it remotely, because we know what the topic is.
Yeah.
We'll have all the charts to you guys, you can be looking at them. Okay.
Please, yes.
Okay.
What time?
Ten on, I have ten on the fifteenth, is what. Dr. Patton, what time were you?
That, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, I have a question, I have a.
I have a question for Ms. Green, who sets up, helps us set our calendar. That is the only workshop then, for the October?
Yes.
Okay. And one workshop, uh, in September?
Right.
Okay, and we're not moving to a more than one workshop monthly, right? Okay, just need to clarify.
Mr. Vu?
At least not the near term. Um, so, one of my requests is, the new one mil started July first, and there's two of us on the board who have no representation on the board, um, for the one mil, and I believe we also need to reconstitute the committee anyway for the oversight of the one mil. Um, so I would like to have the request that we name our members at our next regularly-scheduled meeting, or however that should be working.
Sales tax was one mil, we don't appoint anyone. That's, that, that committee's constituted, like, we, you don't, we don't.
Okay, but then it's still a new one mil, then it needs to be reconstituted, wouldn't it, for, for the, the new actual tax? So we're, we're saying the practice has been not to do that.
Yeah, we have not, that, 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 um, committee was set, like, been a policy when they first approved it. I've never appointed anyone since I've been on. I've never appointed anyone since I've been on, half-sent, DAC.
Yeah, DAC we do, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry, you and I did talk about that. I checked into it, too, and I didn't get back to you to tell you that we don't on that one, so my bad.
Oh, so we don't? So, the district and the ACA just named their members and that's it? Just want to make sure.
Right.
Okay.
But thank you for having asked me because I didn't know that until you asked me, so it was actually helpful.
I do think we need to be talking about that and, and, and looking forward to revising the language. That's what I think we need to have a better conversation.
I'd love to, like, the next workshop be partially about that. One thing I also want to bring up is, it's something I have talked about, but, you know, I just think about, kind of everything going on, and, and a lot of the anger in the community, I would say a lot of the anger comes from a real place and frustration with us as a school district, even if I feel like a lot of the anger's been misdirected, misplaced, or taken advantage of by some bad actors in our community. But I, I do feel like, though, we need to start doing things more to address that, to just show that we are listening to people. And we honestly don't do a very good job of it in terms of the community engagement, especially when it comes to the periphery towns all around Alachua County. And one thing I would love to see us start doing is actually having some type of financial oversight committee. A lot of other counties do have these, and they're fairly big counties, you know, like Pinellas, like Sarasota, Miami-Dade has one as well. And I would love it to include all the municipalities, you know, all nine of them in the county, the Alachua County Commission, too, the ACCPTA, the ACEA, and then the board members as well. I, I feel like just starting those steps of letting people in, teaching them, and just showing them, here's what our budgets are like, here's what financing and education is like, because there's so many, it's so opaque, and there just isn't really even a great understanding of that. So, I would love to see us start talking about that and coming up with a policy, and even just looking at the policies other districts already have when it comes to these things. And then, I know we've been talking about this for a long time, but, you know, in terms of our facilities, we have the FMX software now. And, you know, I, as a board member, still don't know what is that prioritization. It's something I've asked about very early on when I came onto the board. Do we know what facilities get addressed and why? You know, because, you know, we have limited funds, we have limited resources, limited manpower. So, in terms of what do we go fix, what do we not? What is the highest priority, what is not? It always, at least from my perspective, felt like, who's the squeakiest wheel, who's the loudest voice? Who knows the people to get things done quickly? But I would love to us come to a place to where we actually have that. What is that prioritization? And then, also, that, we really haven't gotten updates on, you know, half-sent projects. I know that's on the list, too. And then, even just how are we more efficiently using our school buildings and sites? Because we're in a situation now to where maybe we have, I guess, what would you call this, like, the excess? We have a bit of plenty going on right now. How do we do that in a more efficient way with our school facilities? I know it's something we've talked about a lot, where a lot, we just tend to be a county with a lot of schools with smaller capacities. So, in the long-term plan, which I imagine will tie into strategic planning, how do we just create efficiency gains so we can actually put more money into classrooms and toward our staff? So, I've been, eventually, like, I'll talk to you about this, Dr. Patton, I'm sure everyone else will, too, but I would love to start getting timelines on that. I know you gave us an initial list. I know some of that has kind of shifted and changed here and there. But ultimately, to me, everything revolves around the strategic plan in terms of, like, the facilities plan. And we're already starting to do certain pieces of a strategic plan, but just nothing formally. And the biggest thing still missing to me is that community engagement piece. I still feel like, in terms of formal structures, we don't have those. We don't have ways where we're really eliciting feedback from folks in the community and then responding to what that feedback is.
Yeah, and just to, the facilities one, we're that close to being able to sit down and look, but remember what I mentioned to you is that when we did hire FMX and that whole company, what did they leave out? All the athletic facilities. What are we right in the middle of? The whole Citizens Field. Why? Because we didn't even look at all of that. So, what we did is we did back up. We actually have been working with that company. They're actually going to be, they are in the middle of training one of our people to finish off. So, if we did ever run into a problem like that, we would know how to look at it. So, it's just the athletic facilities, and then Littlewood, for whatever reason, even though it was half-done, we need to get that back in the mix. So, we're that close to be able to then have the whole picture to look at because not looking at the athletic facilities is a mistake. So, we're that close to being able to at least have all the data. We have 95% of it with all the buildings, so...
That's like my biggest thing, too, you know? I know when it comes to, like, Citizens Field, we'd be expected to pay what's essentially a large sum of money to redo the stadium, regardless of how we feel about it. There definitely is some type of need for improved facilities somewhere. But to me, it's, I still can't even answer the question, are our capital funds enough to repair and update our schools or keep them maintained in a current state? And especially since the state, when was it? They, they cut capital funding by half a percent, like, right after the Great Recession?
Yep.
Right? It was two, and now it's one and a half percent. And so, everyone's working with less. And this is a community where things tend to cost more, just by location of where we are.
And your buildings are older, so it's...
Yes.
Remember, like, when we had that workshop, it's that balance. If you can remember that guy in the middle holding the scale, it's about what do you repair? And then, what is it that you're spending on to keep it from having problems? So, it's maintaining and then fixing at the same time that balance.
Right, but until, I'm just at the position of, until we know all that information?
Yep.
Can't make an informed decision on what we do with Citizens Field and the scope of the project, even.
Right, and remember what we've talked about, too, just to remind everybody, that we do not have a historical five, 10, 20-year plan. So, that's what else would get put into a strategic plan. Again, I get it that the strategic plan might have fallen apart, but in a way, it's good because there are a lot of big pieces that were not even mentioned to be in that plan. So, you know?
Agreed. Okay. Thank you.
Lot of, lot of cleanup. I, I def- definitely have shared some of those same concerns you have. I, I have, I had the, the finance staff is what gives me heartburn, trust me. So, I say the finance staff, the lack of accountants, and our finance staff, and us trying to build that up, gives me heartburn because we don't have it. And it's, it's, it's critical for us to get that area staff. You can't start a, a committee if you don't have staff.
Sorry, I did have one more thing on that, too. And it is about finance staff. I know one of the big reasons is we just can't be competitive, especially for finance. It's such a specialized knowledge and experience you actually have to have and skillset. It's hard to find those folks, and we just can't pay folks competitively. I would love to see us move to what other school districts do to make sure that we can attract and then retain talent, is just go to market rate for finance positions like the CFO or the executive director.
Yep.
But I'd rather that be in the job description, so it's not basically left up to internal politics. I'd rather just have it be very straightforward.
And that's, that's where we're headed. But the good thing is, we've hired a senior accountant that starts the 25th next week.
Good.
And we have two other job offers that I think we're gonna make this week still. So, almost there.
Good.
I'll just say yay.
Yay is correct.
Well, I want an accepted job offer because I just thought we had hired an MTPO executive director, and I found out today that we didn't, the person. So, it was like, golly, we were so close.
And, and Mr. Thomas, just to put a part B on your sentence, it's not just that, it's then add in the Florida Education Finance Plan. What our FEFP is, what, what you'll see if you end up getting community people in, they're gonna come in, they're gonna look at that, and they're not, half of them are gonna show back up because they can't even relate to what we're talking about. 24 boxes and 24 components, and they're like, we don't want to work for you. No kidding.
All right, if there's nothing else, Dr. McNeil, you, you good? All right, so nothing else, we're adjourned at 7:57. Thank you all. Okay.